Welcome to this meeting of the Granite Falls School Board. Um, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will hand it over to Dana for acknowledgement.
Great, thank you. Uh, we honor the first peoples of these lands by acknowledging that the area in which we gather is within the traditional territory of the Stillagomish Tribe of Indians. The Stillagomish people have inhabited these lands and waters since time immemorial, and the descendants have remained in this territory to this day. The Stillagomish people have continued to practice the traditional ways of their ancestors, of fishing, hunting, and gathering. The Stillagomish tribe has had these lands and cultural traditions, passed on to them by their ancestors who believe that everything has a spirit and that they are the caretakers of these lands and waters.
Thank you. Um, that brings us to item number one C, roll call. Um, tonight in attendance, we have Director Ladue, Director Carey, myself, Director Kinkate. Do we have Director Gartner? Okay, um, so at this point, I will make a motion that we, um, accept the absence of Director Gartner and Director Dana.
I will second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty. Um, moving on to item number two, A, board comments and reports. Uh, we'll start with W I A A.
Um, nothing substantial from W I A A. Um, but I will say, uh, from a comments perspective, I've, I've loved seeing just the, the community events together. I know I sent Dana a photo when we went to, uh, I took my daughter to the Monte Cristo Skate Night. Um, thankfully, I don't think we left with any casts. It's always, there were a lot of butt falls, but, um, but not, not too much crazy from Elsa, crazy from that. Um, it's starting to get nice out again. Um, and we're getting daylight a lot longer, um, so you know, get out, enjoy, um, you know, go see some track meets. Uh, you know, just get out there and again, right? We, we get locked into our homes all too often, uh, in the Northwest. Um, so really get out there, you know, support wherever you can. Um, you know, and I love to see like build trips and stuff coming back too. Like I know, um, some of the classes are going to the Science Center at the end of this month. Um, so I love seeing all that stuff as well. So, um, just get out, support, um, parents play just as much of a role, you know, and teachers as a stuff. So really appreciate all the support from the community.
Right, right.
Oh, ledge, okay, sorry. I thought, aren't we, aren't we in board comments? Oh, I guess we're doing both.
Come by.
Okay, comments and reports, sorry. Um, uh, first off, I just wanna, um, we had a loss in the Granite Falls family recently. Um, uh, Alex Cunningham, who was, uh, a young man that graduated from Granite and I was, um, lucky enough to know him and his parents and, uh, we attended the same church together and, um, he was a big personality and, and really loved in this community and, um, tragic, tragic loss. And, uh, I know he had some services coming up in the high school, but I just wanted to say publicly to his friends and family, which is many in this community, um, my deepest condolences and, um, I'm gonna try to rearrange some plans and, and, uh, attend the service, uh, this weekend. Um, and I'm, I'm sure that, um, his family would, um, welcome all of us, those that knew him and, and didn't know him and stuff. So just wanted to say how, how deeply he's going to be missed and how much I know people in this community are hurt right now, so. Um, on the reports, um, uh, oh, also in the comments, thank you to the board for, excuse me, the last couple of absences, sorry. Duty called and, uh, um, was trying to get to the last meeting, but ended up having to go to, uh, Great Wolf Lodge for an emergency elevator outage. You know, that's a, that's a big deal, the Great Wolf Lodge, right? Like, uh, coming out of the water park, they need to be, they don't wanna climb stairs. Um, so thank you, I really appreciate that. I, I have tried to stay in touch, um, with all that's happening as, as I've talked about in past presentations, it's a, it's a weird time right now, um, federally, low, uh, in the state. Um, one of the things that I'm kind of hearing clear from WASDA is that, uh, there is still some hope that we will have some, uh, increases in funding. Um, I know that, I don't want to steal any of your thunder, Marshall, I, I see you're, you're there, but, um, the, it's, it's, it's going to be tough that this, this session is, is really, really a bit of slog, just with all of the unknowns and obviously the budget woes of the state and, you know, all of that stuff. So, um, there's still some optimism, but I wouldn't say that it's overwhelming optimism at this point, so. Um, maybe I'll, I'll speak more when, when Marshall's talking here a little bit later, so, um, that's all I've got.
Alright, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say, well, you're done with spring break and now we're in the home stretch, so. May's a long month, but once we get through it, we'll get through it, so hang in there, everybody. Um, and then just thank you to Crossroads for all these decorations in here, it looks awesome. All of these little signs and things, it's encouraging, so thank you guys very much for that. Um, moving on to, oh, oh, he's, he here?
Yes.
He just joined.
Oh, Kenny?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, hi, do you have any, um, board comments?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Um, so director, or, uh, you know, item, item number three, A, superintendent report presented by Daniki.
Thank you. Um, tonight, if we could go forward a couple of slides, great, thank you so much. Uh, first of all, I'd like to introduce our new Granite Falls High School Principal, Ryan Pike. Ryan is with us, uh, tonight. He's been here since very early this morning. He spent the full day, um, at Granite Falls High School, just meeting staff and in classrooms and in the commons and with students and all those kind of things. Um, a few things about Ryan, um, first of all, the, we had a rich applicant pool, so he really, um, he really just won the day and, um, thank you to Mr. Manquini and the interview team. There was, um, thirty plus people that did first rounds of interview and then we brought candidates back last week, um, Thursday, and it was, um, Mr. B and Executive Director Moore and myself, um, for some more time with our candidates. Uh, he's currently serving as a medical principal in Moses Lake. He's been administrator for, for a minute or two. And, um, the thing that, that really was, was shining through as we, as we talked with him is, um, just his emphasis on building relationships with students and staff and, you know, that laser focus on the North Star of, of outcomes for students. Um, he's warm, he's professional and, uh, committed to school improvement, so we are really excited for him to, to join our team. And that picture that is, you can see a little bit, is of him literally today engaging with students, um, in the manufacturing class and JBJ's manufacturing class, so. Um, he is at home with high school students, it's obvious, and students were like, hey, I remember you, and you know, talking with him, so. Welcome, Mr. Pike, do you have any, anything you'd like to say?
Uh, it was an exciting day seeing students and, uh, it was fun just to be at the school today, seeing the staff and, uh, you're right, students, some of the students that interviewed, uh, were excited to see me again and, uh, I, I met so many, and I try to keep all the names in my head today, and I actually was happy when one kid walked by at the end of the day and I, I called him by name. So, um, anyways, I just, like you said, building relationships, um, and keeping that focus on school improvement is what we're gonna do, so I'm excited to be there.
Thank you, we're grateful, grateful that you're here.
Yeah.
Alright, um, next, a, a quick safety and security update. Um, this is something that we've been working on for a little bit. I asked, um, Dan Scholar to, uh, research a few different systems. Um, and these are the systems that our vendors and visitors and guests and volunteers will use as they enter our buildings. Um, there's many, many wins, there's lots of words up there, but the bottom line is it streamlines the process, right? You have a government issued ID, you scan it, you get a badge for the day. The badge actually turns color by after twenty-four hours, so you, you can't wear it day after day after day. Um, that's a safety measure as well. It also will intersect with our Skyward system, so if there is a reason that someone shouldn't be in our schools and our system knows that, it will stop that from happening. Um, you've all probably been places that have these, a lot of big districts have them. Um, like the city of Lynnwood has it, those kind of things, but it makes it, um, it's nice interface. It does have a screening, um, real-time sex offender database, so it's just another, another step in the right direction of, of ensuring that, um, everybody is, is clearly wearing something that says that they should be there, so you, everybody should have, all adults and our kids should know that all of our adults have a badge on or a sticker that would have their picture as well. It also helps if people are going from school to school because if their visitor is going to be here all day, they have the badge, they can show it. And, um, it looks the same at Granite Falls High School as it does at Monte Cristo, as it does in Mountain Way. Um, so we're excited to get this going, we will train staff. Um, and you know, and there's a, there's an initial cost to, to purchasing of, obviously, the, the technology and the items, but after that, it's just an ongoing service fee, um, each year. So Lake Stevens uses it, Arlington uses it. There's a few systems that we looked at. They're relatively close in price, but some of our neighbors use this and that, since we partner so closely with Lake Stevens on so many things, um, this is one that we have decided to use. So we will start getting that ordered and in place and we'll, um, meet with our, uh, building secretaries, I think it's next week, and kind of let them know because they're the ones that are gonna have to use it the most. Um, and like I said, interface with it, so we're excited to, to make this switch, that is, uh, increased security. Any questions on that?
So does this, uh, expedite like background checks for, uh, parents that also wanna come in and help and?
Yeah, I think, I think there's actually an interface there because it could help with that.
Okay.
Um, and parents would always, you know, have to, to get a badge and be, and it's, it's just, it's also just retraining staff that if we're in buildings, if we're in spaces, that we always have something that's identifiable.
Yeah.
Um, and our students know, uh, otherwise, if people are walking around, they don't have something on, then everybody should be like, I'm sorry, I don't know you, you would, you know, that kind of thing, and then either help them access this or we'll have to shore up some things if that's, if that's happening, yeah.
What happens if this is, this is absurd idea, but what happens, you said, if they can go from school to school to school? Say there is a situation in a family where mom has a kid at uh, elementary school and then there's like a, another kid at high school and they have like a no contact with the high school?
They would still have to check in.
Okay.
I, I think that's more for like vendors, I mean, school, as we come in, everybody should be checking in. Um, in our last system, you had to show ID, everybody had to show ID the minute I walked in, and you know, Emily often uses the, the example of the parents like, you know, and I'm like, yep, and we still have to check ID because that's the practice, especially for pickups and, and those kind of things. Um, the real time is really nice because if things happen quickly, sometimes there's emerging situations and we wanna make sure that, you know, we're protecting our kids.
Okay.
Yeah, so excited about that. Um, next, upcoming district and community events, kind of a repeat of some things we had last time, but I wanna remind, um, all of the directors that the Snohomish County Candidate Filing Week, um, is May fifth through ninth. Um, we'll send you reminders that week too, we'll make sure that you all will drive you to Snohomish County, but we will take, make sure that, you know, that you know what you need to take care of. Um, the graduation events are there, and I know Paris has sent that information out to you. Um, the Monte Cristo principal interviews. We, um, that application pool is, is, is filling as, as we speak. Um, it's been posted for a little while and then we had the flyer, um, that went out yesterday on social media and I think our website. Um, and so we have interviews tentatively scheduled for April twenty-first, that will be first round, and then second round will be on April twenty-third. We've invited, um, our staff, um, to participate and we've had a very nice response from the staff, lots of people have already volunteered, and I think we just sent that out to them on, yeah, we have fourteen already. So, that'll be great and, um, we'll invite some parents to be involved. I thought that was a such a win in the Granite Falls High School principal interview, um, process is having, number one, so many students involved. David, do we have eight or nine, ten students? Ten students involved and we had parents on all of the groups and so that just gives some other, um, some other input and perspective and we really appreciate the time that everyone put in. So that's coming up. Spring sports are a little bit of a, again, a moving target because lots of arenas and things, but there is a home track meet, April seventeen. Okay, so that's a good one to attend, and if you would like to work an event, we have just the job for you. So you can work a field event, you can work a running, there's, there's all kinds of things to do, so if you'd like to, it's actually track meets are really fun to, to work. Um, Dave and I are both parents of, of track athletes, so we've spent a lot of time at track meets, but I encourage you to come out that day because we don't have that many home, um, home track meets. Um, SBA testing is coming up, Emily and team, um, are working hard to make sure that we're ready for that and communications, um, are going out from buildings to families, there's a reminder on the calendar for the end of the week for that. And then some graduation events that are coming up, a couple I wanna make sure you have in your head is the senior presentations, if you can make that, that would be great. And then the scholarship and senior award tonight, which is a big one, um, on the twenty-ninth of May. Another thing that's not on there that's happening in May is our final Tiger Cabinet, and I believe it's also on the twenty-ninth. Um, we have three legislators coming, we have Senator Wagner, Representative Eslic and Representative Lowe all coming to meet with our kids, and we would love to have you all there, and if we have three or more of, of you, then we'll have to, Paris is gonna have to send out some columns and things and, and knowing that all of you are gathering in the space, but it's really exciting to have the support of our legislators. Um, lastly, I, I met this week with, uh, our Little League, um, partners, Marshall and I did. And it was really nice to connect with them and we have some work to do to, to make sure our fields are being used by our kiddos that live right here in, in the district, so we'll be doing some work on the facilities use, um, policy and making sure that it's available to, um, our community members. And so thank you Director Ladue for connecting us and, and making that happen when she, when they had some concerns, it was a really good meeting, I think we have some good plans.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to thank Brittany Malador for bringing that to my attention as well, so.
Yeah, she was great, so it was good to talk with her. And that is it for me.
Awesome, thank you. Um, moving on to item number three, the legislative update presented by Marshall Cruz.
And as Marshall comes to take the podium, we did have an update for superintendents in the region, um, legislatively also, and, um, and Marshall's gonna tell you about a few bills that are active. Um, what we're hearing from Dan Steele, who obviously, you know, is, who Director Carey knows well, um, is that if this session, the session may go into an extended session, um, we hope it doesn't. The Senate has, um, some pretty, some good momentum, but it's just, you know, the money, there's not so much money in the pot and it's gotta give somewhere, um, special education funding bills are still alive and well. Um, but the House has, you know, some severe reductions in those, so it'll be, it'll be interesting to see how it all plays out.
Alright, um, so can you go a couple of slides, Kurt? Yeah, so, um, the Senate is, has presented themselves as the advocate for K-12 funding this year. The, the House has taken more of an approach of they wanna have a balanced budget without having to raise any revenue, and so there's been a bit of a pretty strong conflict between the House and the Senate right now. Um, both, both chambers have passed their budgets. Their budgets are not matching at all, so they're gonna be going through the reconciliation process now, but, um, the Senate has three bills, had, the Senate budget passed with three bills in it that address K-12 funding, um, the levy authority, special education, the M-SOCs. They were adopted by the Senate and included in the Senate's operating budget, which was also adopted by the Senate, that then it gets pushed on to the House. And the House then decides what they wanna do, and so the House immediately introduces a massive striking amendment that guts these bills and tries to make it match what their original budget was, and then they'll vote on it and they'll send it back to the Senate and then this big reconciliation process happens, but in the meantime, um, the Senate is posturing that they are, K-12 education is their platform this time around, and so they are kinda digging in, hopeful that they continue to dig in because we really, not just Granite Falls, but K-12 education needs these three bills to pass in the form that they were introduced in the Senate. Um, go to the next one, Kurt. So, um, the local levy bill, um, the House had one and the Senate had one. The Senate is the one that's currently still alive, and basically what it says is that both bills are allowing local school districts to ask for more local funding from their taxpayers. If the taxpayers wanna vote for it. The difference between the Senate and the House bill is the Senate bill recognizes that there are a lot of inequities between asking your taxpayers to provide local revenue. So the Senate bill puts this kind of levy floor that you are, all school district are guaranteed to have this dollar amount per pupil of local revenue, and if you can't raise that through, via your local taxes, the state then backfills it. So what that means for Granite Falls is that next year, if this bill were to pass as written, we would have about nine hundred thousand dollars of extra money from the state, not having to ask our local taxpayers for anything additional. And then another seven hundred and twenty-five the following year. And there would always be this, this floor that if we can't reach the floor in what we're asking our taxpayers to contribute, the state will backfill, so there's this, certainly Seattle and more wealthy districts will be able to go way above that floor, but at least there's a floor where they will equalize it somewhat. So we're hoping that 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 one has a decent chance of passing at the end because there's less of a burden on the statewide taxpayer and it's more allowing school districts to generate local revenue at a higher rate, which is something that both chambers were kinda interested in this time around. And the Senate bill though has a little bit of state funding for school districts like us that have kind of a lower tax base, not much commercial, um, development. Mostly just housing that could never, you know, we, in, in this bill, we, we could ask our taxpayers to pay for, to do like nine million dollars or something for a levy, well, that would cost our taxpayers so much that we would never, we would never even think to ask our taxpayers to do that because it would be a, a huge burden, but this at least gives us a raises us up a little more with state funding to backfill what we can't ask our taxpayers to do. Um, next one, Kurt.
And just to add an extra, the nice thing about that too is it's not based upon student counts, roll marks and stuff like that, and obviously, as you said, just expressed again, it's not coming out of Granite Falls, per se, is pocketbooks, um, which would be wonderful. Only challenge with it is, is that it's, um, if you're, certainly the state kicks in, but it's not the same amount of money every year, and so I, I wouldn't say that you could comfortably hire staff or do big programs because the amount that you get is going to start trickling down and at some point, you're probably gonna have to come out of your pocket. Right. So, um, just a couple of my cynical two cents about.
And, and relying on local levies to fund education in general is just a very inequitable way to fund education because there are, it, it creates greater haves and have-nots throughout the state.
Yeah, so if you wanna do curriculum adoption or something like that with that money, that's, that's the perfect guess.
Um, the second, uh, bill that the Senate passed is the Special Education Bill, Senate Bill fifty-two sixty-three, and we, we talked about this a couple of months ago. It passed in the way it was written in the Senate and then it got tremendously gutted in the House, it's all, it's nothing like what it is, it gives us almost nothing in the House, but, um, the Senate's gonna fight for this because that's, their, their number one is special education. So, um, the way the Senate bill was written, it would, um, give us about two point four million dollars more in revenue. It eliminates the cap altogether and then it increases the multipliers for the different tiers of, um, services. So it also reduces the threshold to ask for safety net. And if a student will likely be eligible for safety net all year and it's a high-cost student, we'll be able to ask for reimbursement quarterly for that student rather than wait till the end of the year. So, right now, we have a lot of high-cost students that are, I think, two or three that are out of state actually, and a couple that are down in, um, Edmonds. We have to pay all that money upfront and then in August, we get, we'll get two million dollars back in safety net funding, but we've had to expend all that money first before we can get any of it back. And so it really wreaks havoc on cash flow and scares us all year long because we have negative fund balance for a good portion of the year. But this would allow us to claim those students more quickly and it would also increase our cash flow revenue based on the new funding formulas. It would decrease the amount of money we could ask for in safety net though, because even if we can show that we have all these high-need students that qualify, we can only ask for enough money to backfill the lost revenue that matches with the expenditures we're having for, for special ed. So that leaves us about, this year, we would be able to claim another seven hundred thou, uh, based on this year's enrollment, we would get about two point four million dollars in additional revenue that comes in monthly, then we could still claim another seven hundred thousand dollars in safety net. So the net gain based on this year's enrollment would be about one point two million dollars.
Which for us is huge.
It is, it, yeah.
That's almost ten percent. Well, no, five percent of our, yeah, about five percent of our rep.
So that is, that is huge. And then, uh, the third bill that's still alive, isn't the greatest bill, you can go one more, Kurt. Um, fifty-one ninety-two, the M-SOC bill. Um, we kinda talked about this a couple of times this year, but, um, there's been, there's the funding formula for insurance, electricity, food supplies, those kind of things, is based on a inflator that it comes nowhere near to what the real inflation is for these items. Our insurance has gone up from three hundred thousand dollars four years ago to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars this year, and the amount of the amount of revenue that we get for that from the state is, has gone up by about twenty-five thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars, it just, uh, hasn't kept up. It's the same problem for every district, it's very easy to point out and to show to the, to our legislatures and they understand it. They, there was a nice bill that was introduced initially, but through the, through the, um, legislative process, it got trimmed back to this bill. And the way this bill is currently written and based on our current enrollment, it would give us about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually in additional revenue. Um, it's not the eight hundred thousand dollar gap that we have between funding and, and reality, but it's better than nothing. So, um, again, there's a, the, next slide, Kurt, please. There's a, there's a battle going on between the House and the Senate right now. The House is wanting to not have any really new taxes, they're wanting to trim costs to balance the budget, they're not wanting to dip into the rainy day fund, all these things, the Senate is prioritizing K-12 education because they understand that K-12 education is drastically underfunded right now and it is the paramount duty of our constitution, is to fund K-12 education, so. Senate's digging in. The warning that we got today that Dana presented is that it might not happen during the regular session, there might be a extended session, which, that's problematic because we've all got budgets to do and staffing to worry about, and if it goes into, you know, May or June, that makes planning for next year really hard and uncertain and we probably have to be a little more aggressive in how we, um, deal with staffing in order to make sure we can have enough money to grow our fund balance next year. Um, probably have a big update on Friday about, um, the bill being sent back to this, uh, the budget being sent back to the Senate, and then I think there's there are two weeks left in the regular session, and then, yeah.
It's okay if I add a couple of things.
Absolutely.
So, um, all of this is great, obviously, not necessarily hitting all of the things we want, but it would be wonderful, but as, um, as you very accurately said, there's no guarantee they're gonna get this, get any of this money, but also, and I would say almost as big, um, when I talk to people, um, in Olympia, there, there's a real concern that Washington schools might not get federal funding, right? Like it might get pulled or delayed or, or something along those lines and that's not a huge amount of money, but it's still, it's still a couple of million dollars for us.
Yeah, I mean, the big, the, the big one that kinda upsets me is that the federal government is talking about changing the CEP rules for free meals for kids.
Yeah.
We just qualified at most of our schools this year for free meals for kids, when they cha, they changed the rules to, you have to be sixty-five percent free and reduced. Maybe Crossroads still qualifies, but none of our other schools qualify, so all we'd be back to paid meals.
Yeah. So the, the only reason I bring that up is, it, it's almost like a, like a, like I would be super excited if we got one or all of these, but then there's still that feeling of, oh gosh, what's gonna happen with federal funding, like we're, we're going to be probably deep into, probably maybe even into the summer before it's all settled, the dust is all settled on everything, so just, yes, again, being cynical. But just throwing that little dose of realism out there.
We've, we've been through this point in the year for many years together, Carl, so, but the ability to be hopeful is, is, gets more difficult every year.
Certainly does, for sure.
This is just a dumb clarifying question on my end. Um, on the insurance front, why, why does not a better free market exist?
We actually, so Marysville had to go to the free market for insurance because the state risk pool wouldn't insure them because of their financial status.
Mm-hmm.
And the free market, um, was gonna cost them. And the free market, um, was gonna cost them, was it four million dollars? Up from one million, something like that.
It was, yeah, I think it was four or five times.
Yeah, significant increase.
The free market isn't cheaper, basically.
Yeah, so we, we're part of the risk pool, which is kind of a, we all put money into it on a kind of. Pro-rated amount based on our size and our, our risk. We all put money into it and then it's kind of a self-insure thing. And, um. It works pretty well. But the insurance market nationwide is pretty broken right now. So there, there's no easy solutions to this. I mean, it's try getting any kind of insurance in California right now. It's really hard.
Yeah, just. Just wondering how McLeary L. Like, uh, yeah, backs, backs into that because in, in my eyes, it feels like a, uh, feels like a monopoly. In which they are saying, hey, we're funding everything, but we're going to. Increase the price of something in which you have no alternative solution.
There were stipulations in the McLeary ruling that required, um, the state to. Look at a line item of things that they have not done. So there's, there's. Threats of lawsuits, there's threats that they're not meeting those requirements. There, there's. They're supposed to change the prototypical school funding model. There's, there's, there was a lot of little, little things. I mean, the big thing was the amount of money that got. Put into education and that. That did change a lot of things, but the part of the ruling was there was a little laundry list of other things the state needed to do. And needed to do on an ongoing basis and they really haven't done that. So there, there is talk of further. Legal actions, but. And I think I will stay here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, moving right along to three, see the business report prepared by Marshall.
And I wasn't gonna present this because I was kind of, um, focusing on. This report, but I did want to point out that in the report is a, um. Is what we're gonna use for our staffing. It's a projection of enrollment for next year. And we're projecting a, a decline of enrollment next year based on smaller kindergarten class. And our cooperative agreement with Lake Stevens for, to be the alternative high school for them is expiring after next year. So there's gonna be a rollback of kids that are coming our way from Lake Stevens beginning next year. So we're forecasting about a ninety student decline, I believe. And so we're, we, we have some attrition, but we may have to make more, uh, have more discussion about staffing at our next board meeting.
All right. Um, moving on to item number three, the prototypical staffing process.
Good evening. The three musketeers.
Yeah.
Oh, all of you. All right.
We are happy to see you this evening. Thank you, um, for letting us come up and talk with you. Um. This kind of starts back in the spring. Um, when, uh, I was blessed to receive this position and be able to sit in on leadership team meetings and. Start learning along with, alongside of Dana and, uh, my colleagues here about Granite Falls. And one of the most common requests from building admin was. More support with the staffing process. So. Uh, it was one of the first things I've heard. I've heard it many, many times over the course of the, of the last number of months. And we are now currently in staffing season. So we wanted to outline for you a couple of the steps that we have taken to. Put some, um, just some bumpers around our staffing process here in Granite. Um, so we'll not take too much of your time, but we just want to make certain. Can you go back up, please? Thank you, Kurt. Um, just, I feel like it was last week, but that was spring break. So the week before, um, our admin. Uh, yeah, for each building, we're presented with some deliverables and those deliverables, uh, were in the form of a procedures packet. With a lot of information about class formation, how to do staffing, um, how we want to do staffing moving forward. It also contained our prototypical staffing allocations, which you'll see an example of in a minute. It also included some live staffing sheets that help us track the work of our certified staff. It also included a staffing process and then some, some deadlines and some timelines. We are bound by, um, some statutory timelines around teacher contracts. So, thank you, Kurt. So this is pretty small, but this is a, just a version. It is, uh, a version actually of the current Mountain Way Elementary School prototypical staffing sheet. So in yellow, um, you see the grade levels that we offer at that school. In purple, you see January twenty twenty-four and January twenty twenty-five count by each grade level. You then see in blue, their projected enrollment for the coming school year. In turquoise, you see that projected enrollment as the whole school. And in green, that projected enrollment drives a certain number of baseline staff.
So I'll, I'll add that to generate the baseline staff, what we use is the prototypical school funding model that, um. OSPI, OSPI provides us with a tool that we're required to use when building our budget. That generates the number of staffing that these number of kids will generate. And then it provides a dollar value for that. So what we did is we plugged in for each school, their. Projected enrollment by grade band and then it's the, the tool spits out. How many staff reps that are generated by the prototypical school funding model. Now, that may or may not be a reasonable number to run a school with, but that was our starting point.
Thank you, Kurt. So this is super duper small and if you look really carefully, you'll see that there are some, um, for instance, Dave B is a kindergarten teacher under this. Um, this is a mock, a mock-up of what a live staffing sheet looks like. You'll see that, uh, that, uh, Superintendent Geislin is also a school counselor and that Jennifer Harmon teaches first grade and. Emily Moore is up there somewhere. I just can't see it. Oh, maybe I'm a special education resource teacher. So, um, so you'll see just some names because we, we wanted to create for. Our administrator, something to look at where it didn't stress them out to see their own live staffing sheet. Um, so what you see here, um, under, thank you, Kurt. What you see here under number one is this is our example school Cascade Elementary School, uh, at number two. That in green, you see our current allocations for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So that is the number of staff, um, the number of K six teaching, K five teaching that we see. Our elementary school doesn't have CTE and so on and so forth. On the right side, under student services, you see the allocations for special education. Speech, language, OTPT, ML services and Title One, reading and lab services. So what we do is we take the green and that is our allocation, what's in our bank for next year. And then white, you'll see all of the positions on the left column. Our current staffing number seven is what denotes that there. It has their, um, endorsement area, their certificate. In the next column, it has the teacher name and their current twenty twenty-four, twenty-five assignment. So the job of the administrator is to take the allocation for next year in green. And basically balance the staffing sheet. And assign teachers, uh, based on their endorsement in their teaching area. With the idea that at the bottom, the balance would be zero, that very bottom row. So this is what we have delivered, uh, to teachers, uh, not to teachers, to building administrators. And they are currently working on this process right now. Really?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So, um, and I know that it's obviously still an ongoing discussion and nothing's been decided, but. How are we also looking at it with the ongoing conversation of potentially going to K five and two buildings too, or how is that?
To, not to speak out of place, but I, I think that trying to do the timing to get to K five by September is. Probably next to impossible. Uh, we're, we're in, I'm working with the surveying company right now. We're identifying. Developments in, within the county, within the city, trying to project developments within the city of Granite Falls based on. What we think permits are gonna be because we, they haven't been allowed permits to be asked for until a moratorium is lifted. So we have this idea of these outstanding permits. That may come, but they still have to come down to City Hall and submit their permits once the moratorium is, is, or their application is, once the moratorium is lifted. So we have a good understanding of the county, which is in our, our school district boundaries, but we don't have. Rate projection on the city. So we're working on that. And then we're working on, um. We'll provide to the board an idea of, okay, here's, here's enrollment projections for the next ten years. By grade level and here's how we, a couple of options for how we think we wanted to go K fives. How we could equitably divide the district so that there is. Similar, similar, similar students at each floor. But that's, that's a, it's kind of a lengthy process and we're, we're in it right now, but it's gonna, it's gonna take a little bit of time.
And, uh, now's not the time to get deep into it and, and I certainly trust the direction of staff. I guess the only. Question I would ask is if we're forecasting in our budget and declining enrollment in, in those, isn't that. Even more of a reason to potentially have two separate buildings because you can right-size. You know, students between the buildings and really make sure that you're, you're equalized as far as staff rather than, you know. One building has got, you know, a hundred kiddos and the other one has got three hundred kiddos, you know?
I, I think, yes, I also, also I think the, the risk for declining enrollment is the loss of the Lake Stevens cooperative. That's, that's a big chunk of the decline in enrollment. So that would be, um, balancing out teachers between. Potentially in crossroads and the high school and the middle school.
Yeah, we, we don't have to go deep into it now.
Well, I think there's an initial, that initial loss, yes. And then it'll be really interesting to see what the, the demographers come back with because. Is it that in ten years, we're still only going to need two buildings? Or is it that in five years, we're going to need three K fives? Because that changes the conversation, right? Because you don't want to move kids and then move them again. So hinging a little bit on that and how much growth is there going to be? Because we might see a decline with the loss of the cooperative agreement and a small kindergarten class, but lots of things, COVID, birth rates are down. There's, there's some, there's some things that play there and those could come back up. But if we, if it looks like we're going to have significant growth and projecting that out. What's the, what's the five-year plan? What's the ten-year plan? And then lastly, we have, you know, our facilities, um, the group that came out to do. Um, the work on the facilities has a report for us and I think it's in a week and a half. We'll be meeting with them. Um, for an initial report and then come before the board to, you know, what are the physical needs of our buildings? What's the growth need and, and how do those merge?
So live staffing sheets, I think this is, um, super important that we have these structures in place for our building principles. And one thing that I do want to say, can you go back one, Kurt? Sorry, this sucker doesn't work. So it's okay. Um, one thing that's really important here on the left side of the sheet, other endorsement is. We have amazing practitioners in Granite Falls municipal district. And we have really nimble teachers that have a lot of endorsements. And so having a system, while this just seems like paper, right? Having a system like this is really, really important so that we can continue to be nimble and agile with our teaching. For and, and really, you know, that commitment to making certain that we're putting, um, endorsed teachers, uh, certificated teachers with the correct endorsement. And in front of kids, but also the place of their real passion too. Um, so, um, live staffing sheets and then just in terms of the process. Um, that building administrators are following, um, they're reviewing, they're balancing their live staffing sheet. They're creating a staffing plan. They're coming in front of, um, Jennifer Harmon and, uh, me and, uh, Mr. Cruz. And, uh, we are talking through how they're balancing their sheet, how they're creating classes for students. Um, I myself am working on it, um, at Crossroads High School. Um, so, but really that piece around. The right teacher with the right kids at the right time and making sure that our checkbooks basically are, our staffing sheets are balanced. Um, we expect those to be completed, the meetings and the final plans to the best of our ability by this Friday. And then HR will take over and we'll start working on what that means across the district for the system.
I guess I'll add one thing that at, at the elementary level. We've been kind of doing this for several years more informally and it's much more straightforward. You have just a teacher teaching one group of students all day. Much easier to balance that against what the state allocates us at this, at high school and middle school and. Crossroads, open doors, much more difficult because you're having a six-period day, or a teacher's teaching five periods. You're having. Bundles of classes that kids need and you're having to try and balance what you have endorsements in with what kids need with the. Six-period day with teachers only teaching five periods, I have a six-period day. It's a much more complicated process at the high school. So, and, and middle school.
Let's see, also that it's never perfect. If the, the allocation is eighteen point four, you know, we know that it's. Does never work out to exactly a little eighteen point four and tie a bow on it. It's, you know, sometimes there's some problem solving, um, FTE that we have to allocate. And so we're very.
But it's a, it's a good tool to have to show very clearly what the state funds us for and what we need to, to operate.
Any more comments?
Um, just one, you don't have to go deep, but what was the process before this?
Um, we would look at an overall kind of class, like, so at, at elementary, it was very similar to this. You would have a forecast of enrollment. You would have, um. Target class sizes for each grade level and that would generate how many teachers you would need. And ordinarily at the elementary school, it's, it's mostly just shifting teachers in grades. That's pretty much what's gonna happen this year. You have. The overall size of the elementary school is typically increasing over the last six years. And it, but it's little blocks that increase or decrease within the K five range. So it'd be usually it's shifting a teacher or if we have a, we have attrition and a, and a teacher. Retires or decides to do something else for a career or moves to another district. That and we have a position, we decide if we need to fill it or not and either don't fill it or fill it later.
And the shifting happens at elementary when you have a bubble of kids, like let's say you have a hundred and sixty first graders and you have a hundred and twenty. Second graders. And so you have to shift a teacher because that bubble of kids is a different size and you have a certain number of teachers at second grade. But you don't have enough for that entering class. So though we, there will always be some shifting at the elementary level between grade levels as. A different number, a different enrollment number of kids.
But outside of teachers, because the prototypical funding model does more than that, does counseling, does Paris and all of that stuff. So let's say that a building was like. Hey, I think I need, I'm sure the prototypical model doesn't say it, but I need three more Paris. So how did they decide if they got three more Paris? I guess, what was that process?
In the past?
Yes.
Current, current, well, it's mostly been generated by APEs to be honest. You know, it's, it's ninety percent of our paras are probably either special ed or. Funded by a title or lap. Very little of our paras come out of basic ed, although. Special ed is probably, since we don't get enough funding for special ed, that's probably basic ed money being diverted to special ed.
To answer your question, the secondary level, I'm not sure there was a staffing sheet that was given and that was, that, to Emily's point, that was one of the things that. I mean, I think it was day two, John did like, you know, it'd be great if we have a staffing sheet, right, to at least start from, to start building the picture from.
Cause I'm just reading between lines. I'm, I'm guessing that you're changing the process because the process before didn't work. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out what that process was and why didn't.
I think more didn't work because the administrators wanted. Greater tools than we were providing in the past. And this is a much better tool for them, but it also. Can be a little stressful when you see what the political school model actually generates in staffing and you know that. Well, I can't, I don't know, like I run a building in that level of staffing, but.
And well, the other side of it too is that your prototypical staffing is based on at the high school level, like thirty-one, thirty-two students. And when we're funding, as a Granite Falls school district, when we're funding a class, which is wonderful, we can have a class of, say, twelve. We're not receiving the funding for the class of twelve, right? So there's, there, there's this balance, this sensitivity to. To what we want to offer in our district and also what our students need and also balancing the funding that is provided. So.
Well, and what the community wants to support, because in a perfect world, that's what levies are supposed to go to, is that enrichment piece.
Total, yeah. So this is, this is just more structure and more bumpers around it. And making certain that we have an opportunity to meet with our administrators and we're all on the same page about what we're offering and we're making sure that we're not offering. Um, some duplications between the buildings and that each building is getting what they need and the students are getting what they need. So this is.
Additional layer of transparency also, you know, it, it shows how the system is funded. And then what is really needed and it, I mean, you can, we can agree that it delta, the difference between those two is needed.
Well, anytime we can create more of a standard operating procedure behind staff, I'm sure it makes. It makes the district admin's job easier because then when they're syncing with, you know, Ryan or Dave or. Or whoever else, they're not having to relearn. Everything when they're sitting down and, and, and discussing it. So, and then also actually I'd also unless this is. Taboo, I would, I would encourage then building admins to like work with each. taboo, I would, I would encourage then building admins to like work with each other too to say, hey, how are you looking at this as well? And they're working off of the same material, same sheets. Um, and a lot of our schools obviously have similar headcount anyway too. So it, a lot of this stuff should, should equate to one another or should be, be a little bit easier to see. So.
And I think that's a great point. And then one of the things that, you know, coming in from a different system, um, is that all of the students that Mr. B and Mr. Pike will have at Granite Falls High School next year have been our students. At some point or another, we, each school contains that great articulation. So it is, it is upon us to make certain that we're creating that sense of community, whether it's through staffing or class offerings or the connection between a class offerings at the middle school and the high school, um, or the connection between Granite Falls High School and Crossroads. What those connections look like so that we can give the best arc of the educational experience for our students. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us, um, to item number four, A, items from the floor. I don't believe we have any, no. Moving to item, um, five, A, un, excuse me, unfinished business. The second reading to amend policy twelve fifty students on governing boards. Is there any discussion on that one?
I love this. I'm loving that we're putting a formal procedure into it and that, um, that it's a multiple students of multiple, you know, not just necessarily the, um, student government are, are able to apply for this and that, you know, they can do it multiple years if they want to. I'm, I think this is great and I commend WASTA for, for doing this policy.
So whilst this had this policy for a bit and the procedures we copied, we might have copied another neighboring districts, yeah, a few of them and kind of combined it. Um, I agree with you a hundred percent. It's exciting because it's a, a bunch of kids who can do it. And then also we'll make sure that there's representation always from both of our high schools.
Yeah. And I just, other, not that I have a problem with it at all, but I noticed that it's can be middle school and all the high schools. So are we really looking at potentially doing middle school representatives?
We could. That was the feedback from Tiger Cabinet is, is some of the kids wanted to, if they, if possible, be a middle school representative and then move up to high school. So I'm definitely open to that. The other thing, we, we talked just a smidge about this at the last board meeting, um, I was, I was talking with, I believe he's the president of the, the, um, Washington Department of Education, their board, and their student advisors actually vote. That's not in this procedure yet, but I'd love to have that conversation. He said, I talked to him at a, at a training I was at and he said, you know, we had him just be advisors and he goes, and then we realized we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, put our money where our mouth is. And they actually were voting members of, of the board.
I'm curious how that works since the board is elected by.
I don't, I don't know how they're doing it at the state level. I'm curious.
I can answer the question because I was actually working with, um, one, the gentleman who kind of started on this. So what they do is they take, before the board votes, the student reps take an advisory vote, like, hey, if you would vote, where would you vote on this? And then because it is against RCWs for, um, a non-elected member to vote in the board. So, yeah.
So they get their input that way.
So we go, before we vote, student reps, how would you vote on this? I would vote blah, 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 blah. And then the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool.
Uh, well, then I will make a motion that we accept the second reading to amend policy twelve fifty students on governing boards.
I will second.
The motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Hey, I got it. I almost forgot he was there for me.
Hey, but before we move on to six A, can I just, one additional thing, um, if it would please the board, um, uh, I think we should remove, um, move from consent agenda, the hiring of our new high school principal. Um, I know in the past, often the high school principal becomes the most popular person in the district. And I think would be a cool way for us, the board to just say, we're behind you, we're out of, not just sliding in the consent agenda. Um, but, you know, just that's discussion. I'm not making, um, making a motion if everyone's okay with that. I just think it'd be a nice thing to maybe do under six A new business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I move that we remove, um, the, uh, hiring of, um, Ryan Pike, Principal of Granite Falls High School from the consent agenda to new business, item six A.
I'll second.
And the motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Dr.
Aye.
So then we would just go to that one.
So we are gonna go, and we're just making notes. Okay. So moving to item number six, A then, um, yeah.
The hiring.
The hiring of our, um, high school principal, is that what we're doing?
Ryan Pike, that's it.
Okay, so the hiring of our new principal, Ryan Pike.
Just quick discussion again, super happy to have you here. Um, couldn't, I've, I've, I checked on you a little bit and I've heard very good things about you. I know a couple of the, your board members in Moses Lake and, uh, um, no one had anything negative to say. And they actually said that we're getting a great, great principal and I, I couldn't be more excited to have you come on the, what I like to call the husky side of the cascade. Little inside with, with board chair here.
Oh.
But, uh, overjoyed to have you here. You're gonna work with an amazing principal, Mr. B, who's, um, like a star in this community and a, a great guy to work with. And I just, I think you guys, the two of you guys are gonna be fantastic, exactly what we need there. So.
Well, that's all I've got.
Yeah.
Yeah, really excited to have you on board, uh, excited to get to know you better as well. Um, but yeah, I mean, the high school is most definitely, you know, I mean, in front of, in front of the large football crowds, in front of graduation. Um, and then most importantly though, in front of the students, right? You are shaping them right before they get out, you're putting the final touches, um, you know, on these individuals before they go out into the world. And that is of, of utmost importance. So really appreciate you joining the team and we're excited to work with you.
Yeah, I would just reiterate what they said. I did a little research on you also. And, uh, yeah, I, I couldn't find anything that was like, oh no, you know, everything was glowing. So very excited to have you and, um, really cool what Dana was sharing about how you were in there. Was that today? The day you were in there, um, you know, just pushing up your sleeves and getting ready to work. So that's awesome. So welcome.
I move that we accept the hiring of the new Granite Falls High School Principal, Ryan Pike.
I'll second.
Hey, the motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Welcome, yeah? All right, so moving on to the consent agenda with the removal. So that will be an addition?
No.
No, just remove.
Yep, there's, so there's no additions or anything. What's that?
Is there any, um, discussion? No? Okay, so, uh, that means a unanimous consent, passing with unanimous consent?
Yep.
All right, um, the time is now six fifty-seven. That might be a record for us. Um, that concludes this meeting of the Granite Falls School District.
Thank you.